Good evening and welcome to the March 28th, 2024 meeting of the Longview City Council. Tonight's prayer and pledge will be led by members of Police and Forestry Post 201. Designed by the Boy Scouts of America and coordinated through the Longview Police Department, the Police Explorer Program provides young men and women the opportunity to learn about the possible career choices available in law enforcement while becoming acquainted with police techniques and procedures. Please rise.
Join me in prayer. Thank you, God, for blessing the city of Longview. We ask you to continue to bless the city, the mayor, and the council members. Bestow discernment and direction upon them. We ask you to provide for the deeds of our city, to watch over and protect our city, to work in the hearts of our citizens to you and their lives, and to give wisdom to the leaders of our city and to guide them. Thank you, Lord, for civil administration. As your ministers, those wielding the sword serve as a threat to criminal activity. I ask that those who work for us in government recognize this calling and do it with integrity. Be with our law enforcement, judges, and attorneys. Grant that they would always uphold justice and the truth, and that they would never misuse or ignore the position of authority as they assist our community. Keep them secure from harm. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. We have a presentation proclaiming Fair Housing Day. Whereas the mayor by proclamation recognizes April 11th, 2024, as Fair Housing Day in the city of Longview, April 24th marks the 56th anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act, called for equal opportunity for all regardless of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familiar status, or national origin. Equal access to housing is a critical component of family and community health and stability, making it just as important as the right to equal opportunity in education and employment, a fundamental right for all. So whereas ongoing education outreach and monitoring are key to raising awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities, the city of Longview can help remove barriers to fair housing by continued cooperation, commitment, and support of all citizens. So I therefore, Andy Mack, by authority of Estimis, Mayor of Longview, proclaim April 11th, 2024, as Fair Housing Day in Longview. To receive this will be Mr. Tiva Marshall Nickerson. Come on up.
How are you? Good to see you. Hey, this is one of these true heroes in town right here that does so much for our community, and we know it because we see your name everywhere. But the community needs to know just how much you do and how hard you work at what you do because this is so important that we get this out there so people understand that there is hope and there is an opportunity. And because of you, that happens. Keep up the good work. Thank you so much. You're awesome. Thank you, sweetheart.
We are now to citizen comment. I do have one speaker card. Steve Crane.
Mayor, Council, Steve Crane, 3805 Tree Top Lane, Longview, Texas. So I'm here to talk about a subject that you may not be familiar with. Maybe you are. If you're a mother, you probably are. I'm here to talk about mama bears. And so in the last couple of years, I've met a couple of women who, mothers, who had children that were in situations that were very unique to themselves. One was a disabled child who was trying to get medical care. Mom, she'd been in and out of the hospital. The mom was concerned about her losing her life. That mom, you know, was very frustrated with the medical system and talking to doctors and trying to find out what the issues were. She fired one doctor and went to another, and she kept doing that until she found somebody that would listen. And that child was on a feeding tube, and now they're not. The other was somebody who their child was in school and they were being bullied, and the teacher was the one that was doing the bullying, and they had a difference of opinion about particular subjects. And she was disciplined. This child was disciplined by the teacher. Well, that mom got pretty upset and went to that teacher and went to the principal and resolved the issue and just, you know, told the teacher how the cow ate the cabbage. You're not going to treat my daughter that way. So we have one mother who saved the life of their child because of her tenacious tenacity and love for her child. And the other one is going to likely to be a successful individual because not only did she have a mother that stood up for her, but was able to react in such a way that changed what was happening and changed the teacher's attitude towards her child. So she's likely to be a successful student. Now, those people that are sitting on the porch and sleeping on the porch of One Love Longview, they didn't have, more than likely, they did not have a mama bear growing up. But they have one now. Her name is Amanda Vizi. She's not going anywhere. Those people that are on the porch, you see them now because they feel safe to come out and stay on that porch, in part because, you know, the police department is there to kind of make sure things are okay. But also primarily because of Amanda. You wouldn't see them. You wouldn't be an issue otherwise because they'd be off in the woods, but they would still be there. These folks are transient. They come in and out of Longview. They come from different places. Nobody's busing them in. But I'm just here to tell you that if you want us to go away, give us a shelter, a low barrier shelter.
Thank you, sir. I have no more speaker cards for the evening. We do not have a public safety update at this meeting tonight. We're so now to consider the agenda. Andy Adams, Council like pulled off for separate discussion. Not as there a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second?
We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We will now consider a resolution adopting an updated Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan to replace the existing Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan that was completed in 2015. Colt Yorick with Stantec will be doing the presentation. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Management. Thank you, guys, for having us today. We were here earlier with the Parks Advisory Board, who gave their approval for recommending to bring, come forward this evening for the adoption. This evening we have Mark Maldonado with us. He's our Planning and Landscape Architecture Discipline Lead for Stantec. He's going to be assisting with the presentation, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Colt.
Mayor Mack, City Council Members, City Manager McPhee, thank you so much. It's a really exciting opportunity for us to present an update and present our findings and recommendations on the Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan update. As Colt mentioned, we had the opportunity to talk to the Parks Advisory Board today and present our findings and recommendations. And we're really enthusiastic that they're recommending adoption of this plan. We have a quick presentation of the update for you guys. It's basically an executive summary. Hopefully, everybody has had the time to read the plan in detail, but if not, after the short presentation, we'll open up the floor for some questions. In summary, the Parks Master Plan has three different lenses that we looked at in order to reach our recommendations. One of the lenses that we looked at was a demand-based assessment where we reached out to the community members, the public, the residents, to see what are their top needs, their priorities, and their goals of this park master plan. The second lens that we looked at was a standard-based assessment where we look at the National Recreation and Parks Society Association into what are the national standards that are out there for parks and rec systems, as well as maybe some peer cities. The third lens that we looked at in our analysis was a resource-based assessment where we look at natural resources, where we look at transportation alternatives, and connectivity networks to see how can the system be better incorporated. So when we talk about demand-based assessment, this is this first slide. We had over 343 actual responses to the community survey, but I do want to mention that we had over 1,000 interactions from community members in terms of getting some kind of feedback in what their desires, their visions, their ambitions are for the parks and recreation system. Over 70% are satisfied with the parks and recreation system. And then we also had a lot of feedback saying that we have some opportunity for growth and improvements in the actual system itself. Some of the things that we've heard that there's opportunities for more pickleball, better connectivity, walkability, inclusivity, et cetera, more trails. But also, we have some challenges that we're dealing with, like, for example, maintaining and operating facilities, cleanliness, safety, and funding challenges as well. The plan presents 10 overarching master plan goals that cover everything from accessibility, equity, operations and maintenance, land acquisition, and preservation of open space. But today, I really wanted to focus on our recommendations that we've pared down into these top five recommendations. The reason that we do this is because there's a lot of opportunities for improvements, but we pared this down to the top five to say, if you were to really channel your energy and effort into these five categories, we really see that moving the needle to elevate the overall parks and recreation system for the city of Longview. When we talk about improvements in maintenance, we're really talking about not only improving some of the existing facilities and amenities that the parks and recreation system offers, but we're trying to come up with strategic ways to better create a maintenance program, operations program, that is able to prioritize projects, but also dedicate the accurate funding to elevate the delivery of that service. So making sure that we acknowledge the effort and the resources that improvements in maintenance will require, but also making sure that we have some kind of strategy and funding sources that is going to support that equally. When we talk about recreation programming, number two, we're really wanting to acknowledge that recreation is not only for children 2 to 5, 5 to 12. It's a multi-generational program that should encompass all ages, all types, all humans, to be engaged in the parks and recreation system, but to also be able to live and play in the system as well. So creating a program and recreational program element that caters to all, inclusive and diverse as well. Going on to, I'm sorry, going on to number three, when we talk about safety and comfort, there's some low-hanging fruit here that we can really capitalize on. For example, increased lighting. I know the Parks and Recreation Department has already started some of these initiatives and has already implemented some of these practices to better increase the safety, awareness, and comfort of some of the facilities, but also talking about some basic infrastructure improvements, like adding more restrooms, drinking fountains, park benches, shade facilities, allowing these facilities to be a little bit more lit, better well-perceived in terms of safety. Number four really focuses on the accessibility to parks, not only from a site-specific, like how are the sidewalks accessible, the ADA accessibility, but also in terms of citywide connectivity. How are we connecting to different parks? How are we connecting trails and equitable access for all citywide residents? And then lastly, the top five recommendation here is really talking about consistent and sustainable funding sources. One of the things that we included in the Parks Master Plan update was a funding matrix strategy that specifically for the city of Longview, based on demographics, based on challenges and opportunities, but also our recommendations, we were able to identify 30, over 30 grant sources that you guys are eligible for, that we can go ahead and start applying for to bring some of these ideas into fruition. So we definitely acknowledge that there's a long road ahead, but we've tried to connect some dots and say, here's a good starting point, and here's a good cheat sheet that you guys can follow to help bring some of these visionary items into reality. Lastly, I wanted to mention that a plan is no good if it just sits on a shelf, and it's not good if it's just only ideas. We really focused a lot on the implementation aspect of this plan. And in doing so, we wanted to mention that this plan should be considered a living, breathing document. It's a plan that needs to be updated constantly. It's a plan that should be used by not only city staff, but city council, by members of the community at large, nonprofits, so that we all present this unified vision of how we can elevate the parks and recreation system, how we can provide amenities like this, improvements like this, that will not only increase the healthy infrastructure of the city, but also increase the quality of life for residents. And so I wanted to conclude by saying that implementation is going to be key in order to bring this vision into reality. And we've provided some roadmap to get there and some resources to get you there. But this is where the plan really starts and where the hard work really starts, is by rolling up the sleeves, starting today by adopting the plan, but then bringing the community together to say, okay, how do we implement some of these recommendations to really increase the level of service that our parks and recreation system has? So with that said, I know it was short and brief. It was kind of an executive summary, but I'll go ahead and open up the floor to any questions that you may have or any specifics that you all would like to discuss.
You want to have questions for Mark, Colt, or John? Very well. Thank you so much. If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, council, before we go around the dais for everyone's item of community interest, I'd like to take an opportunity to celebrate something tonight that I know each member of the council has decided about. This Monday, Eastman, the Longview Economic Development Corporation, and the city of Longview announced plans to bring a molecular recycling facility to East Texas. This investment will be more than $1 billion. Let's pause just a second. Billion dollars. Okay. Do you know, I couldn't really wrap my hand around this. Do you know what a billion is? Okay, you can check my math. If you take seconds, okay, a million seconds is like 11 and a half days. A billion seconds is 32 years. The B number is a big number, and that's going to come to our area. It's the singlest largest investment in our community since the founding of our town more than 150 years ago. And the news conference had the same excitement that I'm sure our forefathers felt in 1949 when Eastman first chose to come to Longview. In the nearly 75 years since that day, Eastman has been a tremendous community partner, and this next chapter is essential in the future of our community. Not only does the investment bring 200 new permanent jobs at an average salary of around $92,000 a year, it also brings temporary jobs, more than 1,000, for the construction process that will take two to three years to complete, which means they will be staying in our hotels, eating in our restaurants, shopping in our retail areas, and providing an overall boon to our local economy. It also marks Longview and East Texas as a community leading the way towards a circular economy. The new facility will play a vital role in recycling and reusing waste products that would otherwise fill up our landfills. Eastman has also committed as part of this monumental project to invest back into our community and work with community leaders and nonprofit organizations to strengthen Longview to the tune of $20 million. That is huge for our nonprofits and for our community partners that struggle each day to make ends meet. It's a huge thing for us. There will be additional steps along the way, but as I said at the news conference Monday, this is truly a once-in-a-lifetime announcement, and I'm delighted to see this project move forward during my time as the mayor. This negotiation deliberation took almost two years. Wayne Mansfield with Leadco, our city manager, Rollin, and myself bantered back and forth with Eastman, and we are so fortunate that they did choose us. We were able to use our industrial agreement to our advantage, which we have with Eastman. This industrial agreement will come due in September of '25, where we will be having to renew that if we don't renew it prior to that. But it was a huge role in us being able to negotiate why Eastman should come to Longview, and I think that, and I thank Rollin for all of his prowess in getting this done. It has really been a remarkable accomplishment for this community. Governor Abbott played a pivotal role in these negotiations as well. We had multiple conversations, as well as at Adrian Cruz, the Texas Enterprise Fund trustee in Austin. She and I had conversations, and they were very receptive to this opportunity for Longview because, as I explained to them, you know, Austin was extremely excited, as they should be, about the announcement of Tesla coming to Austin and Amazon coming to Austin. Eastman coming to Longview is bigger. This is Longview. This is not Austin, not San Antonio, not Houston or Dallas. This is a billion-dollar investment in Longview, Texas. So it was a huge, huge thing for us. When you combine that with what we've done over the past number of years, having Dollar General, having Gap E-Commerce, and now Eastman in Longview, I think we're doing pretty well. So I want to thank everybody involved because just getting any one of those three is a feather in any city's cap. But getting three of those in the last few years is a testament to what we are doing collectively as a council, what we're doing as a city, what we're doing as a region, and our collaboration between our partners with the counties around us, Gregg County, Harrison County, Smith County, our school districts, all the school districts in Longview and Hallsville, all of those communities, Marshall. We are all pooling our resources together because we're realizing what's good for one is good for all. When something happens good in Gregg County, it's good for Harrison County. When something happens in Harris County, it's good for Smith County because we're all in this together. And the more we collaborate together, the more projects like this we'll see coming to our market instead of going to the larger markets where we haven't been able to compete in the past, but we're competing pretty well right now. So I want to say thank you, Rollin. Fantastic job. Thank you, City of Longview, and all of you had helped. Thank you to Wayne and Leadco. It's just been a great, a great thing. So wanted to applaud you all. Once again, once in a lifetime. Thank you all. Okay, thank you for that. We will now move on to our items of community interest. Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mayor. There's East Texas Food Bank in conjunction with the Gretnon Global Methodist Church will be at the food pantry distribution next Thursday. It'll be their first one. They were recognized last week by the East Texas Food Bank for the calendar year 2023. They service 3,877 families through their twice-a-month volunteer distribution. So kind of proud of that. The Pilot Club of Longview yesterday had the honors of reading with the children, and so I participated in that blessed event. We went to Birch Elementary and read with the second graders, and they were just a delight to be around. That picture on the right, you can't see but tell, but I stayed long enough to, now this is second graders, to understand or see them do a phonics lesson. Well, number one, I went to second grade at Pine Tree, and let me assure you, that's not how we did it. So, but we got through it and had a great time. And a lot of our police and fire were there. We were well-represented as a city, and those kids just loved it. So, and last but not least, we talked, Councilman Wade did agree with that the 700-pound deadlift was a remarkable number and is now officially declared a new state record holder of Malachi Gray. And so that's a pretty amazing number. And then on the other side, you'll see the academic all-state pine tree powerlifting. So not only are these, these fine students really good at the weightlifting and the powerlifting part, but they're also very good in the classroom. Preston Armstrong and Alex Brace, and then Zoe Elliott made the elite team. So we're just really proud of all those folks. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. We have Mr. Wade is not here tonight. We need to...
Have a motion to excuse Mr. Wade?
Motion to excuse.
We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Newstead?
Thank you, Mayor. So our kids had a great time going to the Easter egg hunt that was put on by the Parks and Rec Department. They did a fantastic job. And there was a lot of kids out there. Easter Bunny was out there, and it was such a good time. I didn't take really any pictures, so these came from the Park Department. Luckily, my kids stayed out of the mud. So it was, they did a great job. We had a lot of rain leading up to it. So appreciate them doing everything they could to have a great event. So thank you. Also, we had the Joker's Gauntlet put on by the Longview Symphony, and it was a blast. Kids went there, and we had a great time. You'll look in the pictures, there's actually a couple of city staff up there. So there's Dale as Mr. X, Professor X, I guess, and then our own Sean also as Mr. Flash. I think he wanted a reason to race kids. I wonder if he got beat any, but he beat my kids, so he was doing good. He was tired. So appreciate all the stuff, all the volunteers and all the staff and everybody. There was a lot of gin also with our library and some other library staff was out there, too. So a lot of support from the city staff. It was a great event, and it was at the Arboretum, which is a gym for Longview. And it's to, oh, go back real quick, it's to promote their DC versus Marvel upcoming show. It's on April 27th, 2024, and their tickets are officially on sale at belchercenter.com. Go there instead of any third-party ticketing to make sure you get the correct tickets. Thank you. And then also with the Arboretum, we have the 2024 Roots, does live music in the gardens, Thursday Concert Series from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. I think the first one is right now, actually. So if you're watching this, you're missing it. And then the next one is going to be April 4th as well, and it'll be Probable Cause Band and some others coming through the month of April. So check them out again Thursday, 6:00 to 8:00. Gates open at 5:00 p.m. as well. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Happy Easter. He is risen. A little history was made in Spring Hill, Texas. Cohen Rumsey, Mia Bustamente, and Abigail Terry won with their project Radio Activity with a Cloud. They got first place on the Spring Hill Junior High Science Fair in advance to the East Texas Regional Science Fair at Kilgore College, where they qualified to compete at the Texas Science and Engineering Fair held at Texas A&amp;M, whoop, and College Station this past Saturday, March 23rd. On the Texas SEF, they won first place in chemistry with the junior division with their project Radio Activity with a Cloud Chamber. Today is Women in Longview Day. Thank you so much, Mayor, for making that proclamation. County Judge Bill Stout, and thank you Governor Abbott for also proclaiming today as Women in Longview Day. Thank you to the steering committee and everyone who's a part of this wonderful day. And if you don't know about it, save the date for next year. Some more Spring Hill history. Mr. Lipsy batting fifth and starting in left field went two-for-three with a run scored and a walk. I will not pretend to know what that is, but go sports. So more with what Mr. Newstead said. Thank you so much to city staff for participating in the Joker's Gauntlet and for the symphony for doing this. Ms. Nikki Gross, thank you for your commitment to our city. I was having way too much fun, so I only got like four pictures. And thank you to Jocelyn in Education by Design for hosting a treasure hunt downtown so that kids could get familiarized with our downtown and raising funds for at-risk youth. Thank you also to Pilot Club for allowing Councilwoman Gamba slash Ms. Sal... Thank you also to Pilot Club for allowing Councilwoman Gamboa slash Ms. Southwest to go read to some kids and inspire them to achieve their dreams. We had lots of fun reading about ducks. One in five women and one in 20 men have been sexually assaulted in their lifetime. Come here from the experts who work to protect and serve survivors. The sexual assault panel will be taking place April 2nd from 5:00 to 6:30 at 500 East Whaley Street. Also, speaking of remarkable women, we'd like to congratulate a remarkable woman, our Chief Amy Hooton, for breaking barriers in our community and in the EMS and fire field. What time is it?
Rodeo.
Rodeo time! So April 19 through 20th is the Longview PRC rodeo. The Longview Greton Rotary Club does a great job in putting this on and using the funds to give back to our community. So mark the rodeo because we won second-best small rodeo in Texas, y'all, so that means we're a pretty big deal. So if you are not going to the panel and you live in District 5, please come find out about all the ongoing changes going on to our district, such as the George Ritchie Road expansion. Come here from Julie Rachel's about what Hardisons is doing in our district, and Commissioner Ray Bostick will be giving a county update, so please mark your calendars. Thank you so much. I know, I'm sorry, y'all.
Mr. Pertle.
And you are going to stay there and help park cars this year, right?
I will. I'm parking lot duty, so don't run me over.
Okay. I have nothing to, Mayor.
Mr. Mcfee. Good Friday closing. City of Longview office will be closed tomorrow, Friday, March 29th, the recognition of Good Friday. Downtown Live, our free downtown concert series returns for the spring on Friday, April the 5th, and Saturday, April the 6th. These events are just one, a small part of a weekend full of events leading up to the eclipse. Learn more at visitlongviewtexas.com/eclipse. The Walk of Honor, the public is invited to submit nominations for recognition as part of the 2024 Longview Walk of Honor, which plays tribute to individuals whose achievements have made a significant historical, cultural, or social impact on Longview or beyond. Find more information and submit a nomination by March 31st at longviewtexas.gov/honor. Real quickly, in December, the City Council discussed the current status of the pools in our community and several options for moving forward. We directed staff to gather more information, and our council will once again deliberate on that question during a meeting next month. It's also important that residents know that Proposition E of the Longview ISD's proposed bond, which is, will be decided by voters in May, will fund, would fund construction of a new aquatics center and an auditorium if it were to pass. I'm confident that if that bond measure were to pass, Longview ISD would be receptive to having discussions about a potential opportunity for allowing public access to that facility. While it would be presumptuous to assume what any potential agreement would entail, the proposed auditorium is one thing we should keep in mind as we consider and discuss the future of aquatics in Longview. With that, happy Easter to you all. Until we see you again, God bless. We are adjourned.